Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Bob Wagner. I'm going to open the planning, Hatfield Planning Board meeting of April 4th, 2018. To my left is Ron Saucy. To his left is Wilma Davis, our administrative assistant. To my right, Rick Bertram. And to his right, Paul Labby, members of the committee. Paul Dostal is out of town and not present tonight. So we have a public hearing on the agenda that we'll start with. As I do whenever we have a public hearing, I'm going to read very quickly what the procedures are. I will open the public hearing and read the meeting notice. And then I will ask the applicant or their representative to describe the project and any specific requests regarding the project. In this particular case, we are considering an amendment to our zoning bylaws regarding marijuana establishments. And so I will actually make a presentation on behalf of the board and reflecting the work we've done on this particular bylaw. We'll then take any comments from supporters of the project. And they can ask questions of us, and we can ask questions of them. We'll also then take comments from any opponents of the project. And again, we'll ask questions back and forth. The board can then ask any questions they wish of any supporter or opponent. We'll then, after sufficient deliberation, close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate on, in this case, the zoning bylaw amendment. And we may, again, at that point, engage the audience. And then upon completion of our deliberations, we'll seek a motion to either approve. In this case, the bylaws for advancing the town meeting with amendments or changes, we'll vote it down if that's the wish of the board, or we'll continue the hearing to a future date. For those of you who are present tonight, if you're here for particularly the discussion on marijuana establishments, up here on the first chair in the first row are copies of the current bylaw and a table of use, if you want to look at those. So, Tana Hatfield Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, on Wednesday, April 4th, at 6:30 PM in Memorial Town Hall to consider an amendment to the zoning bylaw to add a new section, 7B.0, entitled Marijuana Establishments, to govern the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishment operations, which includes marijuana product manufacturer, marijuana products, marijuana retailer, marijuana independent testing laboratory, dispensing, processing, cultivation activities, and other related activities to the storage, sale, cultivation, and distribution of marijuana in order to undertake a planning process to evaluate the regulation of marijuana and other uses relegated, related to the state regulations on the same, and to address the potential impact of those state regulations on local zoning. So with that, I'm going to, by way of a presentation, if you will, to those here in the audience, I want to make sure everybody is aware of sort of where we are in the state of Massachusetts. Ron, can you move over just a little bit to your right? So I have two quick things to present that gives you a sense as to why we're here tonight and why we're even addressing this issue. So the path to legal marijuana in Massachusetts is outlined here in just a few dates. In November of 2016, the state voted on question four to legalize marijuana, retail marijuana. It passed by a 53% margin statewide and a 52% margin in Hatfield. Then in July of 2017, the legislature actually considered legislation to refine and amend the referendum language, and the governor signed that legislation, Chapter 55. And that legislation created the Cannabis Control Commission, which is the entity that actually will oversee the regulations and licensing of marijuana establishments in Massachusetts. On March 7th of this year, the CCC released its final regs. The final regulations were approved for marijuana establishments in the state. And I'll note that the draft bylaw that was available at the town clerk's office and on our website was actually drafted prior to the final regs. And so the bylaw that we'll be discussing tonight is modified slightly to reflect some of the changes that were made in those final regulations, because we were working off of the draft regulations, which were available prior to March 7th. April 2nd, so just a couple of days ago, the Cannabis Control Commission began to accept applications for marijuana establishments. I don't know what the response has been so far, but they expect by July 1st to issue their first licenses for establishments. And those establishments can be retailers, product manufacturers, cultivators, growing marijuana. So through the course of the referendum and the Cannabis Control Committee and the legislation that was passed in 2017, and then also the regulations that the Cannabis Control Commission has put out, provides options for the various municipalities in the state. And they essentially come down to this. A town can do nothing. If a town does nothing and the state is considering a licensee in that community, they'll look at the current zoning bylaws to see where, for example, a retail establishment is allowed. So a marijuana retailer would go into any zone that currently allows retail. Product manufacturer would go into any current zone that allows manufacturing. A town can adopt a moratorium to further consider its options and a zoning bylaw. We actually have elected not to pursue, the planning board has elected not to pursue a moratorium, because first of all, the moratorium can only go till the end of this year. And we have done a fair amount of research and analysis of this. We're not sure that we would learn anything more between now and the end of December as to what our options are and how we might address this issue. The town can choose to prohibit marijuana establishments. This would be done actually, in our case, in a two-step process, which was laid out by the legislation in 2017. Because Hatfield passed the referendum, question four, back in 2016, in order to prohibit marijuana establishments, the town would first have to adopt a prohibition by the Board of Selectmen, in all likelihood then being considered a town meeting. And then it would have to be voted on by ballot at the next available ballot opportunity, which in our case, if there were a measure to prohibit marijuana establishments, it would perhaps have to come up at this town meeting, which would mean that the next time that we could really vote on it at a ballot in order to get it on the ballot would be in November. So the first opportunity the town would really have to choose to prohibit either all marijuana establishments or some marijuana establishments would be in November of 2018. The challenge with that is that as of right now, the Cannabis Control Commission is accepting applications for licenses. They will alert us if any of those licensees are interested in operating in Hatfield. Until such time that we either have zoning bylaws in place to govern the time, place, and manner of a marijuana establishment, or we've elected to prohibit marijuana establishments, we're basically open for business. The state will look at those applications, look at those licensees. If they meet the qualifications, the state will look at our current zoning bylaws and say, okay, you know, you allow retail in town center business or in any of your other business zones. Someone wants to put in a retail establishment, it will place them in our zones as they are currently laid out. So again, if we were to decide to prohibit marijuana establishments, we probably wouldn't be able to know if we could do that until November. And say, for example, the prohibition effort fails, then we would be right back where we are right now, looking at zoning bylaws. And unless we have a special town meeting, we're looking at next May to get those adopted. So at a minimum, we're basically open for business for almost a year and a couple of months. So understanding that and understanding the options in front of us, the planning board has decided to move forward with zoning bylaws that we have and will discuss tonight to govern the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishments in Hatfield. We'll have them basically, assuming if they pass tonight and then pass a town meeting by two-thirds vote, we'll have them in our pocket. We'll be prepared. We'll be ready for any marijuana establishments that may look to get licensed here in Hatfield, regardless of whether there ever is a prohibition effort put forward. And if that prohibition effort fails, we have a safety net in that we have our zoning bylaws on the books. So that's what we're looking at tonight. And as I said, for those of you that are here in the audience, there's copies to look at. For those of you that are on television, you can look at the, if you were to go to our website, the town website, into the planning board's webpage, a copy of the draft bylaws there. There are a few minor modifications which we'll discuss tonight to be considered. So very quickly, without reading all of this, the bylaw lays out in a preamble the authorities and the expectations of the planning board, and the fact that we are looking at governing the time, place, and manner of marijuana establishments and operations here in town. There's a purpose section, a scope section, which essentially lays out the broad fact that this particular section relates only to marijuana establishments and that medical marijuana treatment centers and those establishments are already governed by our bylaw under a separate section. There are then definitions. The definitions are all taken directly from the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations. We have not modified these definitions in any way. We're keeping with what the state has agreed are. And so there's one change for those on the board that are looking at the draft they have now compared to the other prior one, is that in releasing the final regs, the previous regs had a definition for marijuana products. The final regs define that as cannabis or marijuana products. So we've adopted that definition, this revised definition, and because it starts with a C, cannabis or marijuana products moves up to A, as opposed to previously being, I believe, at G or E. So anyway, there's a definition for cannabis or marijuana products. There's a definition for commission, which is the Cannabis Control Commission. There's a definition for Craft Marijuana Cultivator Cooperative, which is a type of cultivator, which is very clearly defined in the regulations. Marijuana Independent Testing Laboratory, Marijuana Cultivator, or a grower, but not a cooperative cultivator. Marijuana Establishment, which is the broad array of establishments that are governed by the Cannabis Control Commission's regulations. These are Marijuana Cultivator, Craft Marijuana Cooperative, Marijuana Product Manufacturer, Marijuana Retailer, Independent Testing Laboratory, Marijuana Research Facility, and Marijuana Transporter. And there's Marijuana Product Manufacturer definition. And then finally Marijuana Retailer, which is probably the one that most people are interested in, because this is where marijuana would actually be sold to consumers. And for those of you that may have been following this issue over the past year and a half, there's been a lot of debate about onsite consumption of marijuana products, basically having a bar, if you will, where you can then buy marijuana and smoke it onsite, or having, and then having off-site consumption sites, essentially a package store, not unlike a liquor store now where you go and you buy a product and then you take it off-site and consume it elsewhere. The Cannabis Control Commission, yielding to concerns raised by the governor and what they heard during the hearings, have backed off for the moment on allowing onsite consumption sites. And as a result, they've changed the definition of a marijuana retailer. And because of that, I want to read this, because I think it's important. The definition now reads, "Marijuana retailer means an entity licensed to purchase and transport cannabis or marijuana product from marijuana establishments and to sell or otherwise transfer this product to marijuana establishments and to consumers." This is what's been added. "Retailers are prohibited from delivering cannabis or marijuana products to consumers and from offering cannabis or marijuana products for the purposes of onsite social consumption on the premises of a marijuana establishment." So this actually helps us, if you will, our board, because our board was quite conflicted over whether or not we should allow onsite consumption, and it actually chosen to not allow onsite consumption. But there was some confusion in the law as to whether or not not allowing onsite consumption would require us to go through that two-step prohibition process. This clears that up, because whether you call it kicking the can down the road or whatever, the Cannabis Control Commission has decided to look into this further, and they have further reinforced language that was in the law passed last summer, which states that the default is that onsite consumption is not allowed unless it's voted by the town to allow it. So that's a big difference. So if we choose to not allow onsite consumption, we really don't have to do anything else as far as we now understand the way the law is proceeding. So probably most important to people is the citing of marijuana establishments and parking requirements. So we then go through each of the establishments, and this is where you're going to want to refer to your table of use amendments as well. But Marijuana Independent Testing Laboratory would be allowed, as required in these bylaws, would be located in such zoning districts, subject to such standards and conditions, including special permit and/or site plan approval, as required by these bylaws in the Table of Use, Retail, and Service Uses, and shall have a minimum number of parking spaces, as required in Section 5.72, for professional offices and buildings. These are all referring to sections of our current zoning bylaw. And those in the Table of Use, those independent testing laboratories would not be allowed in rural residential, not allowed in outlying residential, not allowed in town center or town center business, would be allowed with a site plan review and special permit in business, industrial, and light industrial, and then not allowed in the ag district. And then there would be special regulations for each of these, as we'll go into here in a minute. Marijuana Product Manufacturer, the text is essentially the same as I just read. "Manufacturer uses would not be allowed in any of our residential uses areas, town center business, or town center, or the ag zone, but would be allowed with, again, special permit and site plan review in the business, industrial, and light industrial zones." I should note that business, industrial, and light industrial zones are also where we currently, in our current bylaw, allow for medical marijuana establishments, so we're keeping it consistent. Marijuana Retailer, that does not permit consumption of marijuana on the premises. We want to reinforce that we're only allowing marijuana retailers that permit basically off-site consumption. Those marijuana retailers off-site would not be allowed in rural residential, outlying residential, town center, or town center business, would be allowed with site plan approval and special permit in our business zone, industrial zone, and light industrial zone, and not allowed in the ag zone. And then Marijuana Retailer Offsite Consumption is another use that we actually are going to put in our Table of Use, and there's a no across all of the zones. So it's very clear that we're not, without some amendment to these bylaws in the future, that we're not going to allow onsite consumption. Finally, Marijuana Cultivator. Again, there's three varieties of cultivators. There's outdoor cultivators, and there's some speculation that there'll be very little or few outdoor cultivators because of the security associated with that. There's greenhouse cultivation, and then there's indoor cultivation, basically in a fixed building. And so we are allowing marijuana cultivation outdoors with, again, site plan approval and special permit in all of our zones except town center, town center business, and business. Right now, we allow agriculture in all of our zones, but we are limiting it in this case, because I should note that marijuana cultivation by state law is not considered an agricultural activity, even though it does involve growing. It is, right now, does not enjoy the exemptions that agriculture generally enjoys. Marijuana cultivation in greenhouses would be allowed in all zones with site plan approval and special permit, except town center business. And then marijuana cultivation in enclosed structures, not a greenhouse, would be allowed in business zone, industrial zone, and light industrial zone, but none of the other zones. So perhaps most important to the folks here in the audience, because some of you, I know, were here at previous meetings that we had, we have a number of standard conditions, other standards and conditions. And I'll read them. "No person shall operate a marijuana establishment without having a license in good standing from the commission," meaning the Cannabis Control Commission. So they are the ones that are licensing these establishments. For those of you in the audience and those of you that looked at the zoning bylaw draft, there was a B in that draft that was, "No marijuana retailer shall be located within a half-mile of any pre-existing public or private school. The distance under this section shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the school building to the nearest point of the proposed marijuana retailer." The state established a 500-foot buffer between schools and any marijuana establishment. And in talking to John Robert and the school committee, it was, they requested that we consider a half-mile buffer, because this would address, if I have this correct, John, all of the walkers. The walkers don't get bust if they're within a half-mile of the school. So we put that in there. And I then spoke, had an informal conversation with an attorney who's very familiar with planning and zoning law as well as the marijuana regulations. And they reminded me that the state Attorney General's Office has to review any of our bylaws before they're approved, and that it might be considered, them not knowing Hatfield and knowing the relationship between our schools and our business zones, they might immediately consider that half-mile buffer to be unreasonably impractical, and we might actually have our zoning regs rejected by the Attorney General's Office, or we could find ourselves in a protracted debate with them. So I started to look at what we were also considering as conditions, and I'll read those to you. What you have is C, but now what I'm going to propose tonight to the board as a new B is, "No marijuana retailer shall be located within 300 feet of any pre-existing residential use." And that's by the Table of Use 1.0, and there's a whole list of what are considered residential uses. "The distance under this section shall be measured in a straight line from the nearest point of the residential building to the nearest point of the building housing the proposed marijuana retailer." Our next condition is that no marijuana establishment, any establishment, shall be located within 500 feet of any pre-existing public or private school or childcare facility or any other use in which children commonly congregate in an organized, ongoing, formal basis. And again, the distance shall be determined between a straight line between that building and the building housing the marijuana establishment. Well, when you take the 300-foot buffer from any residential use and the 500-foot buffer from any school, we essentially are eliminating any of the business areas, since we're not allowing any retail establishment in town center business to begin with, which would be within that 500-foot distance. And the 500-foot distance and the 300-foot distance from any residential unit would, in effect, quite frankly, take out the business zone that's where Prospect Street and School Street meet. We are effectively getting to the half-mile boundary around the school without getting into potentially an argument with the Attorney General that we've created a condition that can't be met. So I did have a chance to talk to John about this. John, maybe you can comment on this?
I think you're absolutely right. This answers the concerns of the school committee. We're fine with the way this is written.
Okay. But you know, John, that what he's saying, that we're ineffectively saying there's no marijuana business, and you can't do that in the state, so you had to bring it down a little bit to make it merry.
It's absolutely fine. I understand it's fine.
Okay.
So having jumped from that, I appreciate that, John. Going through the rest of the conditions, and we're almost done. "No marijuana establishment shall be located within a building containing residential units, including transient housing or group housing, such as hotels, motels, lodging, houses, or dormitories." Some of those uses, like hotels, motels, lodging, houses, or dormitories, are not in our Table of Use of residential uses. They're actually in the service and retail area. So basically, this would prevent any marijuana establishment from being, say, at the motel that we have out on Main Street, Route 5. Here's another key consideration. "No more than two marijuana retailers shall be located in the town at any one time." I should have mentioned it earlier. The state requires that we allow at least 20% of the off-site package store licenses that we have as marijuana retailers. So right now, we are allowed seven. We have seven off-site package store licenses in Hatfield. 20% of seven is 1.4. So by allowing two, we are actually meeting the state requirement of not allowing less than 20%. If you want to have less than 20%, we would need to go through that two-step voting process. Two seems reasonable, and it also meets the state's threshold of that 20% requirement.
Bob, explain that if there's nothing, if nothing happens here, the two goes out the window.
That's right.
And the state says, you know, three, four, whatever. Not that they're coming. I mean, I'm not trying to scare you that they're coming, but if there's no action taken, that's the key number. That one right there, D, is the key number, not the, but the number of two, okay, is the key to the whole process. You got some control if you get this in.
Right. So we're getting two things. One, the number, as Paul points out, and then two, the location. Finally, the owner or manager of a marijuana establishment is required to respond by phone or email within 24 hours of contact by a town official concerning their establishment at the phone number or email address provided to the town as the contact for the business. Marijuana establishment operations shall conform at all times to General Law Chapter 94G and the regulations thereunder. This is the law governing marijuana establishments and the Cannabis Control Commission regulations. All marijuana establishment signage shall conform to Section 5.9 of these bylaws, which is our signage requirements in our zoning bylaw. No signage, displays, or artwork on a marijuana establishment shall state, depict, or include the words marijuana, or cannabis, or any marijuana plants, products, and/or paraphernalia. Marijuana plants, products, and paraphernalia shall not be visible from outside the building in which the establishment is located, and no outside storage would be permitted. No public events shall take place in any marijuana establishment. And that's actually somewhat moot in the sense that we wouldn't allow onsite consumption, but you could see where that would happen at, you know, if a restaurant, you know, they might have some kind of public event, or the, you know, one of our wineries in town has public events. No odor may be noxious, or cause a nuisance, or impair public comfort and convenience. Marijuana establishments shall incorporate odor control technologies and provisions. And I know that the state and the Cannabis Control Commission are working on this, as well as environmental regulations regarding growing of marijuana. The special permit may be limited to the current applicant and provide that the permit shall lapse if that applicant ceases operating the licensed marijuana establishment, or if the applicant's license with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts expires or is terminated. So unlike a liquor license, we're not looking at these being sold to another entity. They would have to go through the licensing process with the commission to get a license of their own. If someone decides to go out of business after being in business, fine, the storefront closes down. If someone wants to move in there, they're going to have to go through the licensing process before they can move in, and then come in and do a site plan approval and special permit with us. And then finally, to catch all, the board may require additional conditions and set standards for performance and maintenance upon finding that such action is reasonably necessary to meet the purpose and intent of the zoning bylaws. Before I open it up for any discussion, I just want to point out, there's two other things to consider here. One is that when an establishment seeks a license in a community, that community can negotiate what's known as a host agreement with that establishment, which basically is like an impact fee. So that community can arrange, there's a limit as to how large the host agreement can be. I think it's set to 3% of what's expected to be the volume of sales or activity at the, you know, if it's a marijuana product manufacturer or cultivator. There's a limit to how large a cash gift it is, but that cash gift is intended to be an upfront contribution. be an upfront, upfront contribution to the community to cover the expenses associated with our review of the project, the building inspector's review of the project, perhaps additional security that the, that the establishment is wishing from the community, from the police department or fire department. This isn't something that we generally get to ask of anybody else who might want to do something in our community that might require our services. So there's some opportunity there to offset what may be considered to be some of the impacts on the community, and some of that money can be used for education, for, at the schools about drug and alcohol and cigarette abuse, whatever. And then finally, if we do happen to get a marijuana retailer in town, the town, and this would be adopted by the town through the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, can impose up to a 3% local sales tax on the sales at a marijuana retailer. And that money is not earmarked. We can use that for whatever we wish, again, for deferring some of the expenses that may occur as a result of having a retailer in town, or using that money for our own needs here at Town Hall, or, or, you know, for new activities in town, or for education or a combination thereof. So with that, I think we should open it up to the audience for any, if there's any supporters would like to comment, or if there's any opponents that would like to raise any issues, and then we'll move through there and then close the hearing. So does anybody in the audience like to comment on what they've heard tonight, either from, and since there aren't many here, if you, doesn't matter if you're opposing or supporting of you, would just let us know when you stand up. That would, I appreciate that. Okay, Joe? And Joe, I know most people know who you are, but if you can introduce yourself, that would be great.
Joe Lavalley, in this seat as a private citizen, but a couple of questions I had is when you talked about childcare facility, I think you need to qualify or quantify what is a childcare facility. Someone could say, I do babysitting during the day. I'm a childcare, so should it be a licensed childcare facility? Should it be a licensed daycare facility? You know, I just think it's too open-ended.
I think actually, good point. If we were to add licensed childcare facility.
You know, it'll, you guys are working so hard to create, eliminate issues that'll pop later on. I do want to thank you for putting in the one about odors, because we all learn from friends of friends of friends. Well, as I said to you guys earlier, I've got some friends in Colorado and Washington, and the odors from a place next door to them is so obnoxious, they had to move. But when they went to sell their house, they couldn't get a price because the neighborhood stunk so bad. So I know that covers a facility, but if it's ever going to be open farming, it's something that you would want to consider in, in the future with that.
Open farming is pretty tough, Joe. That, that, you know.
No, no, I, I think to the point of when we were younger, though, I remember the last.
Outside tobacco and stuff like that, yeah.
Last few years where people could spread, spread quill, but for many people, that's chicken menorah.
Yeah.
Stinks to high heaven.
Right.
And they finally started limiting the rules, and it finally came down to there was only a two-week period in the winter you could do it, and finally, they gave up on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that actually, it's sort of interesting, and I appreciate you bringing this up, because of course, those odors can come from any kind of agricultural activity, but here we have a chance to actually regulate them.
And we do say in our town, when you move here, realtors give you a thing saying it's a farm town, there's farm smells and farm odors, but you've got some of these products that, I'll take one, they call it skunk weed. I mean, it stinks like skunk. It's, it's amazing, but the other one I wanted to compliment you guys on is, is, you know, you've done a lot of work, and it seems like to do nothing is foolhardy for a moratorium or prohibit, you know, you've got a 52, over half the town have voted okay before. And to at least create rules and laws, you're way ahead of the curve compared to a lot of other areas. I applaud you for that.
Thank you.
So with that said, though, now I'm just going to move here. Now, hi, I'm Joe Lavalley, the town moderator. But I do want to say, I really appreciate all the meetings and all the things you do, because as a town moderator, I see people come to town meeting and they want to raise all new questions and, and re-ask all these things you guys have covered. And in this room, we've got six people. It's, it's 30, 40 years ago, this room would have been crowded, there might have been a lynch mob and saying, there's no way in hell.
Yeah.
And yet, here, times change and people change and times move on. So you're facing it, I admire you for facing it headlong, and I take a look at how many people are not here. So when they do come to town meeting and they want to recreate all of this, I am going to try to hold them back and say, you know, you guys have held countless meetings dedicated to specifically this issue. And I just want to say thank you for doing a really great job for the homework you are.
Thank you.
Thank you. We did have a meeting with all of, with the police, with the fire, with water, with the Board of Health there. I was amazed that everybody showed up, because usually, nobody shows, you know.
But when you're talking to town government, police, fire, ambulance, you know, they need to know, what are you trying to impose?
Well, they all had a stake in it, too, though.
Absolutely.
There's a stake in the whole deal.
They have responsibility and a liability and a duty to do.
They double their workload, for crying out loud, if you get the right, if you go crazy with this thing.
Anyone else would like, thank you, Joe. Anyone else like to make a comment or for the record? Yes, ma'am, and please introduce yourself.
Hello.
Hi.
Liz Kugler from Porter Avenue. I think you've done a great job, and I appreciate all the work you've done. I've watched things on TV, and it's been really very informative. And I guess my main purpose for being here was to make sure that, you know, the ball is in our court. So if somebody approaches us, that we should be able to control what we want them to provide as far as education, you know, coverage for health inspections. Some other communities have demanded that they put cameras in and, you know, things like that. So I just want to make sure that this pro, process doesn't raise taxes on people who are on fixed incomes, or families who are sending their kids to college, you know. We shouldn't have to worry about that. You know, they're going to make pots of money, no pun intended.
If I may.
I just got it.
If I may, on the security issues, the Cannabis Control Commission's regs are, a gentleman in the back might be able to corroborate or correct me, it's like 107 pages long. And the sections on security are remarkable. In fact, that alone might be a reason why there may not be any outdoor cultivation, because the security in particular in outdoor cultivation, not required by us, required by the state regulations, is really substantial. So I feel confident that, that that's been considered. And then on your point about taxes, our hope is that, aside from the issues that people may have about, you know, marijuana being sold legally, produced legally, whatever, that this is a hold harmless in terms of taxes, and if anything, is a tax benefit to the community because of the sales tax, as well as the host agreements.
Okay. Thank you again.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment?
Oh, I'm James Sullivan, town resident most of my entire life. I just, I want to applaud you, because I think we're taking the right steps here. I'm studying this at a graduate school level, and I appreciate the efforts that are being done by this board and by town. Doing nothing is irresponsible. There are cautionary tales from Washington to Colorado, where towns that did nothing ended up with five and six establishments when they only ever intended for possibly one or even two. And now those, they're stuck in a situation where they have far more than they ever wanted or desired, when many people wanted nothing at all. So I think it's very good that we're on that palm, that, excuse me, that path. As far as moratorium, I think that had, that had its day, has its day, and, and we're moving past that, because planning, and that's what this board does, I think it's, it's appropriate, because if prohibition becomes something the town wants to do later on, and the 52% decided they don't want to be the 52% anymore, well, they can take steps to do that. But to have the zoning is, is far more responsible. I would pose to this board, or maybe just in town, to general, to think about when we comes to the taxing of this industry, to tax it at the maximum level that we are allowed to by the state, because the fact of the matter is, this is how we're going to gain as a town, and while the host agreement may be good for the, the short term, as, as far as a monetary boost to the town, what have you, infrastructure, the, the ability to maintain our facilities and maintain our, our, our town off of that, that increased tax revenue is going to be critical in the long run. I can tell you that Washington State, they have terribly badly written laws as far as what the towns themselves can do. I talked to a town administrator in Washington, and I think they've made like $6,000 in revenue, like fiscal year, like 2016, 17, which is just absurd to me, when you talk to people in Colorado, and they're, they're doing far better with that, that money. Chief Ozil from Durango, Colorado, which is a comparable community to Hatfield, he's, he expounded on how their money actually goes to the general fund, and then it's decided on what to do with the projects. So I think that's, that's the way to go. I know that's not exactly the, the planning, it's more of the, as far as the taxation things, but just to put it out there for people to hear. Thank you for your efforts, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Yes?
I forgot to test this earlier. The fact that the federal government hasn't okayed this, does that have any impact on what decisions or what we do state by state that has voted it in?
Well, that, yeah, the question you've raised is one for both the people who wish to open establishments and develop them, to really be thinking about and considering, and also the state and the state Attorney Generals, as you know, they, the Attorney General has signed a letter with Colorado and California and Washington and Oregon, petitioning the, the U.S. Attorney General to back off on the sort of change in posture on that. Quite frankly, those are decisions for those people to make and risks for them to assess. But if they do, we want to be prepared for then where we want them and how we want them to be in town. But yeah, it's definitely out there, no doubt about it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? So John, Robert, I know we took you a little out of order. I appreciate your comments earlier about the school committee regarding those two, that sort of change and the way we're addressing that. So hearing no other additional comments, I'm going to close the hearing, and we will now deliberate on it, and certainly, if any of you have any questions or comments, please, either of myself, or Paul, who has been involved in this as well, and then anyone here in the, in the community. But I would like to see a motion offered to accept the bylaws as drafted and as I read tonight, and I'll just very briefly describe what those changes are. One is the addition of the new language in marijuana retailer definition that states clearly that onsite social consumption is, is prohibited. The striking of what was standard condition B about marijuana retailer being within a half a mile of the pre-existing school, and then the refinements in what would now be standard condition B and C to reflect that change, and the fact that we're making it clear that the distance is a straight line from the nearest point of the building as opposed to the ownership. The property line. The addition, as suggested by Mr. Lavalley, of adding licensed childcare facility in what is now standard condition C, and then, and then to reflect the fact that the Cannabis Control Commission has made it clear that, that any onsite consumption will likely require a vote to actually allow, that we actually include in the table of use onsite consumption with no across all of the use, all of the zoning districts. So those would be the amendments to the bylaw that we have, and if I could get a motion to accept those, and we, and it is approved tonight, then I will get this off to Marlene for the warrant.
I make a motion to accept that with the changes that were presented to us.
So we have a motion to accept the bylaw, the draft bylaw on marijuana establishments with the changes that were addressed and discussed tonight. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Is there any discussion amongst the board?
I got one.
Okay.
On that daycare thing, can, after establishment is in, can a daycare open up within the limit to it?
Good, good question. It actually is.
Establishment got to close.
It says pre-existing.
All right.
Public or private school or licensed childcare facility. So it has to be there, it can't come in after. And the same is true for the resident, not being within 300 feet of a residential use, that's pre-existing residential use. So if a residential use comes in after, you know that you're moving in close to a retail establishment.
Okay.
So good, good point, but that is in there, pre-existing. So hearing nothing further, can I get a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No, Wilma, please, no, for the record, that it passed unanimously. Okay, thank you, everyone. And I hope all of you, I know Joe will be there, but I hope the rest of you are in town meeting, and that you stand up when we need to and, and speak to this, to this measure that night.
Joe in that seat.
Yeah, you'll need to, Joe, yeah.
Thank you.
Left, left of the mic, from our standpoint.
Okay, good night.
Good night.
Okay.
When is our town meeting?
It's May 7th, it's the, yes.
It's the second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of May.
I can't get to May here.
Yeah.
Can't do that.
Bob, I'd like to also pass on your, you know, thankful that you did so much legwork on this for us.
Yeah, Bob did it all. I just fooled around in the end, but Bob did it all.
You say May 2nd or May 4th?
May 7th, I think it is.
May 7th, I think it is.
Can't be May 4th, I get too many things going on.
Okay, John.
Hi, John Robleski, I live in Waitlee, but grew up at 55 Depot Road in Hatfield. We had the family farm there since, well, I was a kid, and I guess my mom and dad bought it in 1948. Little over 5.6 acres of land at that time, and in 1979, my mom bought a, there was a tobacco barn on a small piece of land. She bought that from Bayak, Bayak Cigar Company back then. So essentially, all one piece of land on a corner of Depot Road and Cronin Hill Road, a little over six acres. So she passed, we rented the house for a while, and now it's just getting tougher and tougher to find good renters, because the amount of rent they can afford to buy a house, so that's what's happening. And we decided that we want to sell the house, create a building lot for the house, and create a building lot on Cronin Hill Road, and keep the remaining 4.12 acres or so in the barn for our use in farming. So there's a couple little issues there, and I'm not sure how to handle it, so I wanted to come before the board and kind of get some feedback and get a direction to go. I've got some diagrams and photos.
So John gave me a preview of what he's going to ask us about tonight, prior to the meeting. John, if you could put that camera perhaps in a set place and just see if Kyle can run up here real quick, because I think his insight on this would be really helpful to us. So you can go ahead and continue to speak to this then, John.
Okay, so the first page, I think you're looking at, said we'll discontinue this driveway, is that sheet you're looking at?
Yeah, we, yes, in existing conditions, yeah, okay.
We had a preliminary survey done back in '07, I guess it was. So there's a total of 700 and some odd feet of frontage on Depot Road. However, part of that, if you see the dotted line in the right corner of that plan, where the two streets intersection is?
Yep.
That, the deed refers to that point, to the end of that dotted line. The radius is the actual pavement that's there now and has been for a good many years. So essentially, the town right, is not a right-of-way, because nothing's ever been done, nothing's ever been taken, so the deeds read to that point. But the people have driven over that area, like I say, for years and years, so not sure how to handle that, you know, whether we can count that 63.67 feet as frontage as a deed state and go back 200 feet along Depot Road.
You still own it.
Create the 200 feet. And then Bob mentioned, you know, it's a corner lot, so is there some other language in the subdivision or zoning bylaws to talk about a corner lot?
So that lot, so the way you have it set right now is, one lot would be where the barn is now.
Yeah, if you go to page two, that kind of has got the layout. And this is again, preliminary, but the 200 feet that's drawn in there is from that point, according to the deeds, back west on Depot Road to a point, to create a sideyard there, you know, about eight feet, and then come back to however much we need to create the 45,000 square feet.
So can you just describe where your two lots are going to be? One of them is going to be, maybe you can come up here and point it out to us.
Yeah, one would be where the existing house is. So this lot here, I mean, again, this depends on if we include this, it goes back 200 feet to approximately there where it's marked.
Mm-hmm.
This here, the surveyor just kind of put there as kind of a preliminary thing, but whatever we need to get the 45,000 square feet may come back to this point and then over.
So, so this would be a lot and this would be the lot?
Yeah.
Okay. And what's with the barn then?
And then the barn, see, I don't know why the assessors never treated it as one parcel because we still get two tax bills, you know, one for the barn that she bought in 1979 and one for the original piece.
You would have to request that.
But it's been common ownership since '79.
Yeah, it's still two lots as long as it's two deeds.
Yeah.
And I think you have plenty of frontage. I don't think frontage is, because your frontage would include both roads.
Yeah. So that was just what I wanted to make sure that we had Kyle here. I mean, we have a corner lot. So does the frontage include, I mean, is it fair to say what, what Ron is saying, I just would like to get your input on that, that if you have a corner lot.
Ron's the expert.
I believe so, because it's just like on a cul-de-sac. The, the, the frontage includes the curve.
It does.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's right.
Okay. So you would, so you would, you would have your frontage, cause you're on, while you happen to be on two roads, as I'm understanding what Ron and Kyle are saying, you're on two roads, but you're a corner. And so the frontage is calculated by what you have on both roads.
Then the bad side to it is you've got setbacks from two roads too.
Yeah, right. You got to be back from here and back from there.
But the houses are pre-existing, non-conforming, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that is.
Right.
Yep.
So to have the house on that lot, I think if you look, it's, um.
You probably couldn't even do it, right?
Yeah.
By today, you couldn't.
Yeah, no.
No, you have to get it back, right?
Right of way for Cronin Hill Road, and it's interesting, one of the deeds or one of the plans I found says Crown Hill Road, which when you look at that land up there, it kind of makes sense that it's all big Crown Hill.
That's, that's a Scrivener's error.
Yeah, exactly.
That's, that's the N and I being drawn wrong. That's, that's interesting.
More development on Crown Hill.
Crown Hill. Yeah. So what you're saying then, Kyle, is I could go from this point, which is 73 feet. I've actually got a bigger plan than that, so.
Yeah.
So you would need to come in with that drawn out for us so that we could sign an A and R.
Right.
Yeah, cause, so what do we do with this corner here?
Well, you don't, I mean, you can fight with the town over who plows that, but you, but in terms of our needs, if you can get 200 feet from here around to there with that bend in your.
You getting taxed for that? That'd be running into the town.
Yeah, oh, part of it. So basically what you're saying is to start at the 73 footmark here. And the only reason we have this access easement here, the current driveway kind of is in that little area. To keep the driveway there so, so they can access the garage. We would discontinue the, this driveway actually goes around and comes out on Depot Road.
And that's where you did.
This gravel area.
Right.
Just that we kind of did that when we got the barn so we could go around.
Well, that would discontinue a curb cut on Depot Road, which isn't a bad thing.
Yeah.
In terms of getting traffic out on the Depot Road.
Yeah, so it would be a side lot entry the way it's always been. Even though the frontage is 55 Depot Road address.
Right.
The driveway is on Cronin Hill.
And you're not doing anything with this?
No. No, but our intention is to keep the barn and enough access to get into the, and this back 4.1 to 2 acres with this piece for us. My brother stores equipment in there.
So you're cutting it down to two lots? That's what you're trying to do?
Well, it'll be three lots.
Two lots to sell and keep the remaining.
And this one.
Yeah. And will that, no, that.
You're calling that a lot.
Right. Well, right now it's considered a separate lot, right? But you're really looking at.
You're going to merge it with this back one?
With the same plan, you could do that. With the same plan, you can do away with that lot line and call it.
Do away with this lot.
Three lots.
Yeah, yeah. And then you'd have your.
Make it a lot cleaner.
I did a quick thing here after I talked to you briefly earlier. So we did this and counted the radius. Well, that's a question. You want me to count the radius line here or this line?
No, the radius.
Three. So you're creating a new line. You're doing that.
He owns Kyle, this here.
Yeah.
And the town kind of just put a road in.
The road is meandered, like a stream meanders. So the road is meandered.
Yeah. There's one plan that shows this here where this property was, um, divvied up and it shows this just going around.
For survey purposes, it would be easier to work with the radius. We're not.
It would, we clean it up. It would be, it would be a betterment for the town. It would be a betterment in that, that you would, in, in the same respective, as creating three lots, you'd be kind of abandoning what the town is using.
So would that be something to clean it up correctly to deed that piece to the town?
I don't think it's necessary, but.
Yeah. What you're doing is creating a, a.
An orphan little triangle.
Yeah. Well, you're creating a new lot that kind of abandons what the town is, where the road is meandered.
By using the radius.
Right. And, and, and for our purposes, it would seem, John, that what's important to us is that while you and your family might be like, well, gee, we don't want to lose this, we just need to know that you got 200 feet off of this radius from here to there and it looks like you probably do.
It's a benefit for you to lose it actually.
From this point here around to here is 100, um, well, it's 11.32 feet short. So I would have to come another almost 12 feet to here to get to 200 feet.
Right. And then, and so you'd be moving this lot line over, you'd still have 200 feet here, right?
It wouldn't matter for this because you're going to merge that with this.
With this one.
We do away with this lot.
Right, right. Well, no, you'd still need this lot line, right, John, Ron? You would.
He would need just this to get, pick up his frontage.
Yeah, he'd go his 12 feet over and then that line would come down and come across.
But that would become, that would become part of this line.
Right, exactly. And that's, this is the line you're getting rid of.
So create one lot without this line.
Right.
Just enough, what we, whatever we need to create the 45.
For that one and then that one. So you end up with three lots.
You know, this is actually the highest part of all this land. So it only makes sense to have, you know, an additional building out there versus trying to do it down here.
Right, yeah.
These guys are now Mot McDonald and they're in, um, West Springfield by the, by the AAA building.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, just, they were there, they were actually in Holyoke when this was in. So I guess that's just an old stamp.
Yeah.
Yeah, but Bill Ozy was one of that.
Oh, yeah, Bill Ozy, yep.
Why can't he claim that as his frontage?
Because the road meanders on it and evidently it's confused. That's why the surveyor drew it this way?
Yeah, but the, he had a survey done. He owns that prop, that road.
Well, the deed, the original deeds say that, yes, we own that, but.
And why can't he use it since he owns it? And he's been paying taxes on it. What do you think the reason is?
Because he's, because he's willing to draw a new lot line.
If he didn't have enough frontage to do the three lots, then he would be arguing it. But John's got enough frontage, so why argue it? I mean, just.
Cause he pays taxes on it.
Ah, that, what he's gonna, what's he, what does he pay? A dollar 60? You know, very much.
It's a betterment. It's a betterment to the town.
Yeah, it's cleaner.
Yeah, it makes it better. And then it'll get off your records. I mean, what is, what is the square footage of this?
Um.
900?
990 square feet.
Feet, yeah. That's, that's.
So should that dotted line still show up on the plan?
Uh, it'd be up to the surveyor, I would think. But as far as the planning board goes, we would.
Still in the deeds office, yes.
We would, we would like, we would like it, um, you know, to clean it up. Much like a subdivision, you know, creates a, creates a right of way that the town accepts.
Another issue is how long has the town been using this little junk, you know?
No, what was it? Just one day somebody decided to take the corner there and it just made a dirt road?
Well, that's a dangerous intersection. It's, it really is.
Could have, could have been anybody. Maybe his brother cut the tobacco wagon to a short.
Right here with a power pole. I'm surprised nobody smacks into that. There's plenty of times, I live on Cronin Hill. There's plenty of times I come out and somebody's coming in.
Coming in the other way.
This way. And it's like, eh!
So this, this lot, you would, this lot, you would be.
I'm up the hill. Um, Pat, do you know where the police chief, um, lives? I'm two houses from him.
Police chief lives up there? Oh.
Tom?
You mean, uh, Northampton?
Yes.
Yeah, Northampton police chief, yeah.
I'm two houses up.
So yours houses on the market now?
Yes, right.
Yeah. They're booking out of town, man.
Retirement, early retirement.
Getting out while I'm getting's good.
All right. So I think I'm pretty clear. We'll get that drawn up. Um, I read the submission requirements under the A and R. So we'll get that done and.
Work with Wilma on that.
Come back to a meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right, John, thanks for coming in. Thanks, Kyle.
Thanks, Kyle.
Thank you.
See ya.
All right. We have just here, you can take these. You can take that with you. We have just a couple of other quick items to do and we, God, we're going to be out of here fairly early. So I ran into, um.
Oh, yes.
I ran into Ms. Mazik in Town Hall the other day and I asked her if she would be sure to get us. We should make sure Kyle knows this.
I, I just left it in there.
Because I was going to suggest to Kyle that.
Okay.
No, um, building permits be issued until we had this. But anyway, if you remember, Mrs. Mazik was our first conservation open space development. She hasn't started any work up there as she indicated when she met with us and she mentioned, reminded me again when I saw, saw her in Town Hall, that these are all going to be for her kids. She's not expecting at this moment that she's going to sell any of the lots, but her kids might. But if you remember, we did a conservation subdivision which required that they put 14 plus or minus acres under conservation restriction and easement and that she actually , uh, record that and that it'd be recorded in the deeds and that we have confirmation of that. And so we have it. Um, it was recorded on, um, February of last year, February 28th. So not long probably.
She had, she had just not brought it over.
She just hadn't brought it over. It's book, uh, 12, 561, page 113. And so we have this now for our records and we actually now can officially say that we've done a conservation subdivision.
So she wanted to subdivide her property for her kids and.
We, uh.
Made or put 14 acres in.
We have a conservation, yeah, we have a conservation development subdivision ordinance, which would, which was the only way she was going to be able to do this. And that requires the setting aside of some of the acreage for open space, permanent open space.
Cause her frontage was way, way short for what the hell was going to go on here.
Right.
Okay? So the only way for her to get that was to do that.
Do this conservation subdivision.
And she had more than enough acreage that, I mean, it was, it wasn't a.
So in other words, you give me something, I will give you.
Ah, right. One hand washes the other kind of.
It's like blackmailing.
No, it's not. It's a very legitimate use of the zoning bylaws. It's used all over and it also.
Your husband called us everything before that.
And it also, it also results in this case that there's, if indeed any, if the zoning were to change in the future.
Him and Barley used to go at it.
Full development of this area. We've protected 14 acres of it. So here.
Thank you.
So the other issue I just want to raise with the board, and I don't know if any more of this is going to, if this is going to come up, but Marlene mentioned to me that, um, there was interest expressed and someone came and made a presentation to the Board of Selectmen about possibly leasing the land owned by the town, which is our well site in West Hatfield on, um, on Route 5. Uh, there, it's actually the property that's behind, uh, where the Long Streets live. There's a big open field back there, which the town owns and it's the recharge zone for our town well.
Right.
So it's part of our, uh, drinking water, um, infrastructure. This individual was interested in seeing if the town would lease that land for them to put a solar array on that property. Obviously, if they were to do that, it would have to go out to bid because you can't just negotiate something like that directly with an individual. It would have to go out for bid. And, um, so the Board of Selectmen was, you know, considering this suggestion and, um, Marlene went to the Conservation Commission and then approached me and said, would, you know, obviously something like this would have to go before the planning board. Would you, um, you know, perhaps talk about it with them and see, you know, just preliminarily what your reactions would be. Now, I'm sort of throwing this out to everybody. You can sort of think about it and we can discuss it at our next meeting and actually have it on the agenda at our next meeting. By then, we may know if this thing has any legs or not. Um, you know, my concern is, is that, you know, we are allowing solar fields on properties that otherwise have other potential uses. You know, for example, they could be subdivided into house lots because they're, it's privately owned, it's above the flood plain. Uh, our zoning ordinances would allow a certain amount of development. And if the zone, if a solar array goes in there, that's, you know, some, somewhat a, a more minimal use of the land as opposed to it going into houses and, you know, all of the attendant, uh, services and, uh, required and associated with that. In this case, this land can't be used for anything else. It's owned by the town.
Yeah.
As open space.
Yeah.
So to actually put it into a solar array, we're actually losing open space. And we're losing a lot of wildlife. Have it there, you know, if any of you have ever driven past that area, there's, it's remarkable how much, how often you'll see, you know, turkeys and deer. Certainly, I've seen a bear from time to time, but mainly you see turkey and deer a lot.
Now, you're talking about water. Are, we have a well out there?
Yeah. Yeah. So we have a well. And it's interesting because my immediate thought was, well, there's got to be some potential negative impact on the well. And the, the state, this, this gentleman in anticipation of that concern produced a document that comes out of the State Department of Environmental Regulations, D O E R. And the state, you know, much to their credit, is so aggressive in trying to promote renewable energy and solar in particular, that they actually put out a document that states, and I can make it available to all of you. Marlene told me what the link was and I read through it, that outlines, you know, that there is, uh, little to no environmental impact on the states, as far as the state is concerned, of solar arrays on land. Um, you know, that they're, they're mainly made up of inner, there's no chemicals in those, um, solar arrays that if they were to be broken or, um, were to become deteriorated with leach into the groundwater. So we, your point is well taken, but the state.
But.
Environmental Regulation Office is saying.
I know somebody takes care of a solar array. They spray chemicals on the grass to kill the grass.
Yeah, cause they don't want it to.
Right, right. So, so in this case, yeah, so most of the ones that I'm aware of, they don't do that. But the, if we were, if this was going to be allowed, that would obviously not be allowed. There's no way they could do that because this is our well. This is our groundwater well.
That's what I'm worried about. Water's gold right now.
Yeah, right.
It's going to turn into gold.
And so my feeling on it anyway is that I take a little different view if the alternative is that a 20 acre site could be 10 homes than a solar.
Well, it can't be 10 homes anyway, right? I mean, it couldn't be.
The town owns it.
No, 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 no. I mean, if you have a privately owned parcel of 20 acres.
Okay, all right.
And that could be maybe 10 homes. Someone proposing a solar array on that, I think is a worthwhile option to consider as all, as an alternative to residential development. But in this case, it can't be used for anything else. This can only be used for open space.
Yeah.
It can't be developed. And so to me, it's in a little different category.
I just, I just told it, I just told that water thing, dear, to my heart. Leave it alone. We own it. You know, what are we going to get out of this damn lease deal? You know? I mean, and you're saying those things are, those things are 20 years. They got a 20 year lifespan or 23 or whatever, right? Uh, who the hell's going to be here to protect the water 23 years ago? They're just going to dismantle this damn thing or let it rot on the ground or what? I, I really hold, dear, holding the water part of this thing, you know?
I'm with you, Paul.
Dear, and say, jeez, no, thanks, but thank, I understand. It's a great deal, but no thanks. Cause we don't want to have an argument later on.
My water wasn't there? I would say yes.
Yeah, 100%.
So when, so if the town were interested, for example, in finding some way to generate revenue from solar on town-owned property, I would, my suggestion would be that the Board of Selectmen, along with DPW, consider the DPW buildings, which all face south and one of them is virtually brand new.
Yeah.
Put rooftop arrays there.
Yeah.
And then also put an array on the capped landfill.
Yep.
You know, as it goes over the hill there, that faces east and south. You could probably set those arrays up so that they're mainly facing south. Um, you know, cause that area there is, it, that's unused.
Yeah.
Cap, uh, capped land. And other, other communities are cap, are putting solar arrays on their capped landfills. Okay.
For my first blush, I'm. For my first blush, I'm against...
Well, if it, if it goes, did the Conservation Commission discuss this? I know that it was, that they, that she had been reaching out to, and the open space, they reached out to the Open Space Committee, I think, as well, so, okay, all right, well, if we hear any more, we can, we can address it officially.
Okay.
All right. The only other thing I would ask you to look at, and I guess we'll bring it up at our next meeting, is this letter of April 4th from George and Angela Burwick, they own the Old Mill, B and B in town regarding Airbnbs in Hatfield.
Compliant or complaint? What's that supposed to read?
It's a complaint. It's a complaint about Airbnbs in Hatfield.[1683.12]